You're good.
Awesome. Well, thank you all for meeting with me today. I'm so sorry that we were unable to meet in person. I am here up actually in Leadville right now and I tried to find like a private space for this call. So I'm currently upstairs at the Silver Llama if you want to come by after. Um, I do have a slide deck for this. I don't know if it's okay for me to share my screen, but want to respect to what is allowable at this time.
Yes, Audrey, that's fine. Give me just a second. I'll make you a co-host so you can share from your screen.
Thank you. Accidentally clicked AI companion, my bad.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, great. Well, um, let's see if this works. Does this work for you all? Can you see it?
I can see it.
Okay, wonderful. Um, I won't be able to see all of you, so just feel free to interrupt me. Um, but I'm just gonna kind of cruise through. Um, but first, I know I'm a new face to many, so uh, my name is Audrey. I am the new executive director of the Colorado Small Business Development Center, serving uh, Lake Park in Chape County. Um, and uh, I know that I'm only thirty days fresh to the role, and so very happy uh, and excited to speak with you all, and hopefully we get to meet each other at another point. Um, but I just wanted to give a quick intro about me before uh, going to the SBDC as well as my ask. Um, so about me, I come from a background of similar to the Small Business Development Center, but I came from the Northwest and Rocky Mountain USDA Regional Food Business Center. And so I very similarly to the Small Business Development Center have supported five thousand uh, farm and food businesses across the Northwest side of the United States. Uh, we executed, we had a portfolio of thirty million, but I managed a portfolio of uh, five of those millions and really just helping bolster businesses that uh, would have ripple effects in the region. So managed one hundred and thirty-five grantees of uh, small business, uh, small businesses in the food and farm sector. Also an entrepreneur, um, throughout Colorado. I've been up here for ten years and so uh, have had my own businesses, got one acquired as well as was an SBDC client, so I know the power of SBDCs. Uh, and then I also have a background just in business advising and all of those great things, grant management, impact reporting. Um, and on the side that I'm not working, I am a board member of Adventure Cycling. Uh, I'm big into long distance bikepacking and all those fun things, so. Um, but to dive kind of in, uh, so the Colorado Small Business Development Center, if you are unfamiliar with us or whatnot, we are a network of business uh, development centers across Colorado. We have fourteen service centers as well as twenty-five satellite centers. Um, oh, we will let, okay, I see someone. The notifications coming up on my side. Thank you for managing that, Candace. No worries.
He nearly lost service, so he's signing back in.
No worries. Um, so the Small Business Development Center basically is what I'm saying is a network. We have fourteen centers. And uh, we have one here, which is called the Central Mountain Small Business Development Center. Um, across all of our service centers, we have thirteen business, uh, three hundred business experts across our range that small businesses have basically it's a go-to one-stop shop uh, for any type of business owner, whether that is startup to maintaining, to resiliency, to exit planning, to disaster recovery. And so with that, what we do is kind of what I already mentioned, but we do low-cost confidential business advising in our three county areas specifically. We have free to low-cost training workshops events. So marketing, there's actually one happening right now, which is a marketing workshop, but I couldn't attend to come to this. We have brand development, Performa 101, bookkeeping, uh, startup basics. We also help uh, small business owners navigate access to capital, getting them loan-ready, talking to banks, seeing where the bottlenecks are and how we can position our training to ensure that we are kind of reaching those low-hanging fruits. And then also one part of the Small Business Development Center is that people don't realize, and what I want you all to know is that we really uh, pivot on the dime depending on what the emerging need of the community is. So for instance, I just had a meeting with uh, Andy, um, or yes, I just, or Adam. Um, I just had a meeting with Adam just around childcare program rollout and all of that, as well as um, we do disaster recovery, insurance navigation. So if there was a electrical tower to fall down here and Leadville is without power for a month, we are here to support those small businesses to ensuring that their insurance claims and other things are well-managed and documented and verified. And so we wear a lot of hats, and you might be asking, Audrey, is it just you? It is not just me. Um, so it's me and Molly. We're a small but mighty team uh, managing our Central Mountain Small Business Development Center. But we have a team of twelve advisors here. Um, I'm not gonna name all of them because I only have fifteen minutes of your time, but uh, they're pretty robust in all of the things that they do. And so how our process works, our businesses come, they let us know what their challenges are uh, through Molly and our intake process. And then we are matching them up with a local expert that can help support that, whether that's a HR need, whether that's a um, financial need. And then from that, if we're getting a certain amount of data points that are saying, hey, we're seeing a need in like our finance classes, and we need to deploy more of those, we then pivot on the dime and do that. And so uh, actually, as of yesterday, we had a uh, or maybe it was last week, we had a finance workshop that was filled to the gills. Uh, because we're seeing, given things that are going on in our economy, our small businesses are getting impacted, and they're trying to think how they can shift on the dime. So uh, we have wonderful advisors and they are busy. And you might be asking, how busy, Audrey? Um, so here's our impact uh, year-to-date from two thousand and twenty. I have to give all of this gratitude to the advisors, to Molly, and especially Jamie. And Jamie uh, was in this role before, and she really started the Small Business Development Center in our area, and she was busy. Um, so on the left side here, you can see the years, client counts, I mean, just in the last five years, these are unique clients. So uh, you know, intake uh, in the intake process. So we have over a thousand clients that we've engaged with in the area. Of those clients, they have come to do advising, uh, so that client sessions, we've had over three thousand client sessions, one-on-one with our, those are our advisors. In terms of our trainings, we've had over five hundred and fifty-seven trainings. This is uh, updated as of September. That is pretty incredible. Uh, coming from the front range and knowing how the other small business development centers work, this Small Business Development Center cooks, uh, is how I want to say that lightly. Uh, in terms of our training attendance, we have almost seven thousand uh, folks attending these workshops or those one, you know, small cohorts of training. In terms of business starts, job creations, job retained, this right side, I'd like to say is more self-reported from our clients. The left side, we're able to count from attendance, RSVPs, all of those. And so only two percent of our clients actually give us this data, so I just want to highlight, these are very low numbers uh, to what they could be. Uh, but in terms of business starts in our three county region, uh, the SBDC has gotten credit for forty-six of those. Uh, in terms of jobs created, one hundred and sixty-five, jobs retained, two hundred and fifteen. Um, as you can see, more to the right side, again, self-reported capital infusions um, of this year, just three, almost three point five million. Uh, increased sales, um, a hundred and six thousand, uh, and then increase in contracts, whether that's federal or whatnot. Uh, that number is low. We know that by year-end, all of these numbers will be high. And so thinking of the impact of just this very small but mighty Small Business Development Center, and then thinking of the investment that Lake County has towards that, it's, I would like to say, other than who else is speaking today, we're a pretty good investment, and we hope that you all continue to invest in us. Um, the quality of our trainings are also well-liked, well-received. We uh, have high scores of client satisfaction of this year, ninety-seven percent. Number of uh, of existing businesses that engage with us, this is interesting to me. Um, so uh, sixty-one percent of our clients have an existing business. That other, so you're thinking almost forty percent are people that are trying to start a business in our area. So that to me is an interesting number, and as I dive into this role more, I want to know more about it. Um, but again, satisfaction is across the board. This year has been challenging. I don't have to say it. You all know it. Um, for us, we've had uh, delays at the federal level where our funds are not coming in all at once. So we've had to pivot, be resilient in our own ways, find sponsorships. We've had to pull from our own reserves, basically as we're waiting for the funds to come. Or the funds will be given to us in three-month uh, sessions, and that does not work, especially if you have trainings, workshops, all of these things to prepay. Uh, we've had new grant regulations, so uh, the grants that are coming down uh, have more stipulations to them that uh, have required us to reprint things, to uh, change up our messaging last minute. Uh, we've had accessibility uh, mandated down from the state level, so we've had to change up our websites, socials, slide decks, everything. Uh, and that all takes time. And then lastly, we've also had a huge overhaul in CRM uh, transition into Salesforce. Um, and so some of these client numbers and whatnot may change um, this year, just because we've had a huge CRM uh, change. So very much like if you were to go with a different CPA, there's always going to be internal understandings of why those numbers may change. And so um, those are just some things I wanted to highlight, at least personally, um, that we've had as a center this year. We've also had, um, because of the delays of funding, Jamie was operating by herself for a very long time, and this is not a one-person job. Um, and so uh, that is the reality of our situation, and within the first week of my job, I know I need to start fundraising. And so that is, and diversify um, where our funding is coming from. So you might be asking, Audrey, uh, how are you guys funded and how does this structure work? I'm sure you all know this, but I want to go through it uh, in case there's new folks on the call that don't. So we are a program out of Oletit. And basically how that works is the SBA, the Small Business Administration, they have funds and that they'll give to Oletit and to help uh, start and fund the Small Business Development Center network within Colorado. Of those fourteen service centers, we need a cash match from municipalities or what have you to ensure that we are needed in the areas that we're operating in. So um, how that works is Chafee, Park and Lake have come together years before my time uh, to support and cash match uh, a Small Business Development Center being in our area. And as you can tell, we've been very busy since. How that cash match works um, is uh, and as you can see, the budget has gone up uh, for two thousand and twenty-five from two thousand and twenty-four. But how that kind of breaks out here is the SBA will give us eighty-five K and that breakdown of other cash matches, it basically comes, Chafee gives us sixty-eight percent of that cash match, and Lake and Park give us sixteen percent uh, each uh, to meet our minimum requirement and some more. I am asking here today for the same amount of funding that we received last year and to continue your investment in our Small Business Development Center. Uh, my plan for this next year is to ensure that we are diversifying, so we're not just relying on our municipal, or our county municipalities to support us, but also the cities that we are operating in or those partners that we are uh, supporting closely. And so um, that is my ask of you all today. Um, in terms of my work plan for two thousand and twenty-six, and you know, what are some things that I can make appealing for you all, why I think you should fund us and continue to invest us, is truly, I'm not here to recreate the wheel. I'm here to listen, to pivot, to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our community where they are at. And so now that the election season's done, and I know I've reached out to Candace, but I want to see like, what is it that our county needs? And what are the emerging trends that our small businesses are showing that we need to have at a local level? Um, as well as have more local presence up here in Leadville uh, as well as over in Fair Play. Um, and so with that, I just want to thank you for your time. As I give you my quick elevator pitch, I know I have one minute, so I don't know if there's any questions that I can uh, answer at this time uh, for you all.
That was great. Thanks for going through all of that in like, record time. Phenomenally uh, stated there, and um, I have no questions uh, for myself personally, but I, I'm not gonna speak for the other commissioners.
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Hi, Matt.
Hey, I figured out the raised hand icon. That's a, that's a joke. Audrey, thanks for coming. This is really cool work, what you guys do. Um, do you have a breakdown of how many Lake County residents you served versus Chafee County residents and Park residents?
But often because of the CRM transition, but I can generate a report, and I can send that to you all if you guys would like that in your uh, considerations.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And Audrey, could you possibly uh, email this um, slide presentation to me and Sarah? And we can make sure and put it in the packet, then that way they have that to review.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions? I know it's fifteen, so I can hop off for the next one. Great. Matt, I know you know how to raise your hand, but now you're not, have to figure out how to lower it. All right. Well, good luck with the rest of the interviews. I will make sure to send out uh, that information, and thank you all for your consideration.
Great. Thank you, Audrey.
Thanks. Bye.
Have a good day.
You too. Bye.
Okay, um, up next, we have the Chafee County Housing Trust, uh, Chafee Housing Trust, I'm sorry. Uh, I think we had the pleasure recently of having in the BOCC room, so if you guys want to go ahead and take that away, we are all ears.
Thank you, commissioners. Glad to have the opportunity to present to you. Um, I want to start with, sorry. Saying thanks so much for uh, meeting with us a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to say I really took um, some of your feedback and concerns to heart. Um, hearing that there is much more reduced funding and much more higher needs in our community than in the past. And with that, um, I met both with the city uh, mayor and Elsa Tharp and um, Becky Longberg from the Regional Housing Authority to discuss if it would make more sense to make this funding request from the Regional Housing Authority um, to get two A funds to fund Chafee Housing Trust's work. Um, and we have decided to go that route. Um, and so at this time, I would like to um, repeal um, my funding request that we submitted. Um, and so um, just want to let you know that how the process is gonna work is we're gonna go to the Leadville Lake County Regional Housing Authority's next meeting. Um, and we're gonna make the similar requests that we made to you um, in combination with the requests that we made of the city. Um, and then they will consider that and work with the city to see if um, the two A fundings can cover this funding request so that you guys can reallocate um, to some of the, the basic needs that I think um, are really dire in our community at this time.
Thank you so much for uh, the situational awareness and being flexible and uh, you know, creative enough to look at other options. We uh, I, I can't state how much I appreciate that with our local partners.
Yeah, happy to. I think um, it's one of the ways that Lake County shines the most. Um, in my experience, when I first um, came on to working at Build a Generation, we had just won the, as a community, we had just won the Robert Wood Johnson Culture of Health Award for being a collaborative community and being creative and being really well-networked. Um, so uh, we are happy to step back and look at uh, other options when it is needed, um, and super um, grateful for your guys' support in other ways. Um, and happy to answer any questions and be resources for you as we continue to go forward.
Great. I have no other questions if uh, no one else on the board does.
No, I'm good. Thank you, Kristy.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but I just want to really express gratitude, Kristy, at you coming back and um, getting people together. You're such a good community organizer, and um, it was really nice to hop on a call with Dana and figure out action steps for moving this forward. So thanks so much for being a mover and a shaker in housing. Appreciate you.
Thanks to all you as well.
Okay, thanks. Um, we are a little ahead of schedule. Uh, that's everything from Chafee Housing Trust. I guess, should we take a, a nine or ten-minute hiatus until we get the Tabor Opera House onboard?
Uh, I think Sarah is here, if she's ready.
Sarah and Amy are here.
Okay.
Cool. All right. Well, then we will go ahead and hear from the Tabor Opera House Preservation Foundation with their community partner funding requests. Take it away, guys. Thank you.
Thanks. Can you hear us both okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Great. Okay, just give us a, interrupt us if that changes. Um, hi. It's nice to see you all again. Um, it's been about a year, I guess, since I've seen you all together. Um, I, for the record, I'm Sarah Edwards, the Executive Director of the Tabor Opera House Preservation Foundation. Here with Amy Tate, who is our Board President. Um, as stewards of the Opera House, we're really pleased to be um, asked and have this opportunity to show up today and um, be considered as a community partner for your economic development goals. Um, we know you have limited resources to offer community partners, especially this year. And we know we're in a pool with some really wonderful other nonprofits in this community who provide basic services and work with you to accomplish that area. Um, we know you have a lot of challenges uh, this year, balancing your pool of funding between those basic services while also um, looking forward to the community's needs for economic development, so we can together create a more prosperous future. Um, so mostly what we're gonna talk about today is uh, our economic development promise for the Tabor and the vision that we have, and how we think we can be a community partner with you. Um, thank you for showing our slides. You can move to the second slide, please.
Okay, hang on one second. Let me. Oh, of course, I'm having an issue with this. Okay. That work?
Thank you so much. Um, it, I have a bit of a cold, so if you have a hard time hearing me, please just let me know. Um, so the Tabor Opera House Preservation Foundation exists to revitalize the historic Tabor Opera House for the benefit and enjoyment of the community and visitors, and as an economic development uh, project for Lake County. Our agenda today is to present our two thousand and twenty-six goals, uh, share our recent accomplishments, and review how look, how public um, investment in the Tabor continues to be strategically leveraged to gain impressive state and nationwide support for the project. You can go ahead and switch the slide. Um, our two thousand and twenty-six budget request from the county is to maintain your two thousand and twenty-five level of support, which was fifteen thousand dollars, one, one-five-zero-zero-zero. And a quick note that in twenty-three and twenty-four, we um, received fifty-five-zero-thousand. So along with many other community partners here, we took a reduction last year. Um, but we're just asking that you try to maintain our level from last year to this year. Um, BOCC's annual investments help us continue to provide free and low-cost events to the community and visitors, including high-quality music events, um, as well as use of the space by community groups, especially nonprofits for their events. Um, in two thousand and twenty-six, we will also provide regular film programming uh, geared toward youth and family audiences. Our rehabilitation goal for two thousand and twenty-six is to complete pre-planning for our roof replacement project and the accompanying electrical service upgrade necessary um, for the roof replacement. They have to happen in tandem. Um, and to hope to do both projects in twenty-six or twenty-seven, depending on when the final funding that we need comes through um, from our uh, out-of-county granters. Funding from the BOCC provides a powerful leverage when we are applying for funds outside of our community. We are often asked if we have uh, public support from our city and county partners um, when we apply for grants, and they look for those line items on our financial statements. Um, ninety-five or more percent of our rehab funds, though, uh, almost always are coming from out of county, ninety-five percent or more. Um, and they are restricted to specific invoices occurring during construction. So sometimes we, we do use or rely on these BOCC awards to help uh, support some of our pre-planning costs, like grant writers or construction document preparation, which is pretty costly. Next slide, please. So we'd like to share our twenty-five, twenty-five accomplishments. Um, in rehab, we've finished our two thousand and twenty-five construction season, having fully refurbished our storefronts, windows and doors. This wraps rehabilitation on all four exterior walls of the building, which is an effort that has taken nearly a decade of fundraising, planning and execution, so we're pretty excited about that. Um, we've also completed roof and electrical construction documents and fundraised half of our goal for uh, those two projects. In programming, this year we presented six uh, live performance events, mostly music and theater with Lyric Theater of Leadville. Um, and we did another sixteen partnership events with groups, including Lake County High School, the Leadville Dance Collective, Lake County Build a Generation, Lake County Public Health and DHS, who were anchors as part of a wellness fair during Mountain Pride, Bravo Vale, Cloud City Wheelers, Leadville Race Series, National Mining Hall of Fame and Museum, Continental Divide Coalition, and Main Street. And also a support from Visit Leadville Twin Lakes and a grant that they gave us last fall. We were able to upgrade our film capacity and got master licensing agreements with two, a major film studios, so we can show more feature films at the Tabor in two thousand and twenty-six. And we highlighted um, interest in this uh, over many surveys, and then we actually did two events in the last month, Ghostbusters and Coco. And um, we received a lot of great community feedback and support for this idea of doing more films at the Tabor. Um, we're also growing our youth collective. We've more than doubled our workshops, uh, number of days and number of participants um, between twenty-four and twenty-five, and we have growth planned for twenty-six as well. We gave more than twelve hundred tours and take-a-peeks, which are like short tours um, in two thousand and twenty-five. And overall, that we welcomed more than five thousand people, or we're on track to welcome more than five thousand people um, this year with two more public events to go before the year end. So um, in regards to our campaign planning, um, last year we reported that we had aggressive goals in two thousand and twenty-five related to our interior capital campaign planning. We're proud to say that we've made major progress um, already. We've created a campaign plan with Make Philanthropy Work, and from February through June, we started convening a capital campaign planning committee um, to help us execute our plan. And we've identified a customer relations management software to communicate with donors and patrons. Um, while this may sound boring, boring, it will save us dozens of hours and help us develop better relationships with patrons and donors, which is critical to our long-term fundraising effort. Our next big uh, goal in this area is to hire another full-time administrative staff member who would be a campaign manager. Um, until then, we have been gunned growing our capacity for this position by paying a consultant to write grants and proposals on behalf of the project. Um, we invested so far seven thousand dollars in this person, and her work so far has returned ninety-five thousand dollars of grants um, for our rehab phases and to help support actually her um, costs. It's like capacity building grants. Um, so, and we also have another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in grants that she's written, we have yet to hear back from. Uh, we're really proud stewards of this publicly-owned building, and we work really hard to try to leverage every single dollar we get from the public sector um, and our local community to reap back much larger investments for the project. Since two thousand and seventeen, the foundation has turned the cumulative uh, funds we've gotten from the city and the county um, into an estimated six point two-five million for the project from individual donations, sponsors, grants, uh, state rehabilitative taxation tax credits and earned income. So what this equates to is basically for every one dollar invested in the Tabor by our local governments, um, we've been able to raise more than eight dollars towards activating and restoring the publicly-owned building from outside of the community. Our sound financial practices have also allowed us to adopt resiliency, such as seeding a rehab and operating reserve account. This ideally prevents us from needing to request unexpected emergency funds from our local sponsors or partners. Also, we have collected, we often collect rehab allocated funding for a year or two until we have raised all the funds needed. When we are able to, we are strategically investing grant funds raised for rehabilitation until we are able to begin these projects. Um, thanks for switching to the last slide, and now can we switch to the next slide? Yep. Um, so again, we come here to you as a partner in economic development, and we also consider ourselves a community development project. Um, I pasted a few statistics here that encourage you to review in more depth uh, at your leisure. Um, but essentially, there's a study done every three to five years in a national organization called Americans for the Arts, and they have a prosperity study that uh, studies the impact of cultural organizations across the. and they have a prosperity study that studies the impact of cultural organizations across the nation. So there's some good statistics here for you to know about. The one I want to point out here is artist travelers or cultural travelers are ideal tourists as that they stay longer and spend more money than other visitors. One-third of attendees travel from outside of a country to, or county, sorry, county to see the activity that they're going to. And they spend an average of $48 per person in addition to what they spent at the organization, so on dining or parking or other local shops. So we believe a revitalized opera house will serve both community development and economic development goals. On the topic of community development, especially today as we had to go remote, I think about this every time something like this happens in our community, but we really believe that cultural, community, public spaces are essential to the health of a community. Community cultural space provides a feeling of safety and belonging, and events provide thoughtful exposure to other viewpoints and experiences. This is so important in our increasingly digital and divisive world where people are convinced by algorithms that everyone should have the same point of view that they have and then get outraged when people don't. These opportunities to gather in real life with our neighbors and produce, participate in, and watch cultural events together, we believe really truly builds a healthy, compassionate, and connected community, and that is also truly worth fighting for and investing in. Can you please switch the slide? But on the topic specifically of economic development, each year the Tabor provides more local jobs to local workers. I think we're up to thirteen seasonal staff right now, and more to come. From high schoolers and seniors serving as tour guides and docents to administrative professionals raising money and running our programs. Currently, the preservation work also provides regional contractor jobs, and those folks often come up and work here from maybe adjacent communities, but are staying in our hotels also and spending money in our restaurants. Our growing programs will also provide more contract engagements for musicians, artists, teachers, and technicians. And as we grow into a year-round venue, part-time positions will become full-time, and seasonal positions will become year-round. And as we've shared before, the revitalized Tabor aims to serve the region as a heart of growing momentum to elevate arts heritage and preservation as beacons for visitors. As I said earlier, people who travel for evening theater, film, and music events are more likely to stay overnight than even some people who travel up here for outdoor recreation in the winter and summer. And unlike seasonal outdoor recreation, cultural tourists can eventually come all year round to events at the Tabor. That will hopefully even out our shoulder season and provide more opportunities for visitors to contribute to our tax base through lodging tax and sales tax and build our tax base, which then allows us to have more funds to take care of our community needs. That's the economic promise vision that we're aiming for. Until such time that more interior spaces in the Tabor can produce earned income, the foundation must rely on other sources to cover our annual operating costs, primarily individual donor fundraising, sponsorships, grants, and public investments such as the counties. We've got this nice slide here of some of the events that we've had over the year. So take a look at those at your leisure. We have a lot of fun, as you can see, and I think the community has a great time, too. And... I can do this part? Yes. We were gonna give you a written report when we saw you in person, but I think it was included in your packet. That report has some more pictures. It also has some specific numbers about how our revenue has grown and changed. You'll see sometimes we have revenue surpluses. That's, of course, us raising money that's designated for rehab that we then spend a couple of years down the line. And you'll also see event and audience numbers from this year. So we encourage you to take a look at that when you have a chance. In conclusion, we appreciate your consideration, your continued partnership with ideally meeting our request of a $15,000 budget allocation, which again will support discounted and free, affordable subsidized events for our community, preparations for our next phase of rehab, and continued strategic growth as often as we can do it with our business, which will hopefully help meet our goals and your goals towards economic and community development. So thank you for your time, and we invite any questions and look forward to our continued collaboration.
Thank you so much for presenting. I love the Tabor Opera House. Really stoked to see you guys in here. Thanks. I have no questions, but I'm not going to speak for the other commissioners.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have no questions. I am so grateful that both of you all are at the helm of the Tabor Opera House. Sarah, it's so nice to see you as ED, and Amy, thank you so much for your stalwart dedication to the Tabor Opera House. Yeah, it's really, really nice to see you all here and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just echo those comments. Thanks for coming in. I'd like to see some more concerts there. That'd be great.
Excellent.
More live music.
Yes, we're working on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, yeah, thanks for coming in. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and see if we have the next folks on board. You ladies have yourself a great day. We appreciate yous. Do we have the representatives from Treetop Child Advocacy Center with us already?
Yes, my name is Aubrey Seall, and I am here.
All right, well, let's, if you are okay with starting a little bit early, let's go ahead and hear from you guys.
Absolutely. Sure. So I have to be completely honest with you all. I just joined Treetop officially about two weeks ago. I had been writing in-kind grants for the organization since February of 2024, but I left my job at the town of Breckenridge to work for Treetop because I really believe in their mission. So this is my first time doing this with you all. So is there a format that I need to follow? Do you have questions for me? Do you want me to tell you about your organization?
Well, Aubrey, we are all new as well. So this is our first year as county commissioners. So we're all, to some degree, in the same boat.
Awesome.
Essentially, you know, I think what we're looking at is our, the limited funds that we have to help support community partners with. We just are taking presentations from you guys to explain how those are used, how they benefit the community, and just things of that nature.
Sure, sure.
Aubrey, I will just, I will just offer that we, that Treetop did come and present to us back in the spring. So we, we do understand who you all are. Your chair and ED both came and spoke with us.
Amazing. So, so glad to hear that. Yeah, so this request, it's essentially just to help us keep doing the work that we're doing. We're mainly asking for continued general operating expenses. Our organization doesn't just serve Lake County. We serve Eagle County, Clear Creek County, and Summit County as well. But we do have a number of cases from Lake County. And I don't have the statistics in front of me, but I would be happy to share it with you via email after this. Investing in child advocacy ahead of time essentially saves communities money in the long run. Our approach is very child-focused, and it's developmentally appropriate. So our forensic interviews, instead of sending a kiddo into a cold, stark police interrogation room, they come to our facility. They sit down with a trained forensic interviewer to tell their story. It's videotaped so they don't have to continue telling their story to numerous people and reliving that trauma. And we've existed since 2017, and there has been a lot of turnover. There were a few executive directors who didn't even live in the community. They lived down in the front range, and it's really hard to serve communities in this capacity when you don't live here or understand the intricacies of it. So we have a new executive director as of end of 2023, and she has completely turned this ship around. I joined them to write grants in 2024. And with changes in our larger administration, there weren't as many grants available for the town of Breckenridge. So I transitioned to Treetop. It's definitely more rewarding. And I'm, I'll share with you all that I was a victim of sexual abuse when I was a child. I was six, seven, eight years old when it was happening, and I had to go into a police interrogation room. And we were treated like we were the perpetrators and the criminals. And that is just not what child advocacy centers are about. And, you know, we made it through okay, but we would have definitely benefited from having a child advocacy center. It just makes world of a difference. So, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I apologize I didn't come with an actual PowerPoint presentation. We've actually, since I started, I've participated in four forensic interviews just in the past two weeks. And one of them was an emergency case, and we turned it around in an hour. That's how dedicated we are to serving victims and their families.
Well, I'll start by just saying thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you're doing, the hard work. It is not, it's not an easy subject to even talk about. It's, you know, I have the utmost respect for what you guys accomplished and the help that you provide for the community's youth.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's definitely difficult, but we're trying to... We're also in the process of getting into the schools and/or libraries in communities to do developmentally appropriate crafts and reading, to teach about body safety, help kids identify safe people in their life. So we're trying to be more on the prevention side as well, not just reactive. And that's also a really beneficial service that we're, we're starting to provide. And I'm sure Amy and the chair talked about our mobile forensic interview program. We piloted it in Eagle County, but would love to bring it to Lake County. Basically, organizations there provide in-kind space. And if we have an interview with a family that doesn't have the means to get all the way to Breckenridge to our facility for a forensic interview, we will go to them and do the interview there. And that is especially helpful in the winter, you know, when the passes are a mess and veil pass is closed, or I forget the Passover, too, where you all are in Lake County by the climax mine. But, yeah, so all of the funding that we get will go towards continuing our forensic interviews, but also expanding our services to hopefully prevent child abuse neglect and serve our communities better. So.
Aubrey, can you talk a little bit about the funding cuts that you all have experienced in the last year? I'm assuming you would normally have gotten VOKA or VAWA funds?
Yeah, VOKA, every year we're seeing it decrease. And there's also a lot of unknowns, even with our community partners, that have been committed to giving us funding every year, a flat amount. Some of those community partners, we still haven't heard back from either. So it's a combination of federal funding cuts and then local government cuts as well, which is completely understandable. We're all in a really, really tricky time. And I know work of every nonprofit is extremely important. So who am I to say that you should give money to us and not somebody else? You know, I, my ultimate dream, and I'm sorry if I'm oversharing, but we're essentially assisting law enforcement agencies. We are making their investigations possible. I would love to just see it incorporated into a local DA office or a law enforcement agency and just have it be a department within and still have the off-site location so you don't get that scary police feeling. But just something to help with sustainable funding is really important. So I have no idea how we do that. Everybody is struggling, and we understand that.
Do you, do you receive money from the Fifth Judicial District, then?
So, yes, we get funding through their charitable contributions. We have applied to their VALE grant every year since I started, and we've been unsuccessful, which is disappointing. I've thought that we've had really strong applications, and it's been denied at least the past three times I've written it. And when you compare it to an application that was submitted way beyond Amy and I even got here, I want to sound humbled, but the applications are much stronger in the past few years. But I do actually have a meeting with them on Friday morning to discuss the application and figure out what we're doing wrong. I think the general feedback was that we didn't articulate that we provide victim services well enough, which was kind of baffling, but because our whole organization only provides victim services. And I think there was a disconnect because we're not asking for funding for a specific program right now. We really need funds. We need to build reserves, and we need to bolster our reserves to continue to provide these services. And then, once that is bulked up a bit, we can then start to really dive into implementing specific programs.
Where are your reserves right now?
I can pull up our budget sheet. Our executive director wasn't able to join me today, and she would have been a much better person to talk to about finances. So I don't know that I'm the best person to do that, but if you have any, I'm happy to email you after the fact with an answer.
That'd be great. Yeah, because we similarly have a reserve issue, and I respect it. I want it. And I just want to know what the context is for y'all's reserve.
Yeah, let me write myself a note. I'm trying to move away from paper. Trying to do everything more electronic to be environmentally friendly. So my way of a to-do list is to send myself an email.
I do the same thing. That's smart.
Yeah, and then, like, I move it out of my inbox when I'm done doing the task. So. So our reserve.
Okay. Are you requesting money from the city of Leadville?
Um, I don't believe so, unless Amy had done that prior to me coming on board. But I don't think we submitted a formal request to them. In my experience, so, for example, with the town of Breckenridge, they, they provide, you know, a flat dollar amount to Treetop annually. So we try not to double-dip and then also ask for a grant. So it could be that Leadville may have given us funding, and we don't want to double-dip and also request grant funding. Although, maybe we should. I don't know. But we don't want to take advantage. Yeah.
No, just curious. Thanks. Well, girl, I want you to be funded so badly.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we, we need it, but we know everybody needs it. So it's, I don't envy the position that you all are in at all. Yeah.
Aubrey, thank you for doing the difficult and important work. Is there a specific amount you're asking for? Did I miss that part?
Um, I believe in our application. We are requesting $25,000, but that was a number. We will take anything, honestly. But that's our reach ask for this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming in. Good luck.
Thank you. Yeah.
Really tough.
It is. It is, but it's meaningful, and it feels good to have a purpose. As much as I enjoyed working for the town, I, I find more pleasure in doing this work than writing grants for a new culvert. So it's a little more stimulating here.
Yeah.
And I will add, and I can include this with more detail in my follow-up email, but I know that your, the commissioners' priorities lie, I think it's housing, economic development, asset, something, and community justice. Forget, forgive me if I missed any of those, but I know sometimes it's hard to see how funding a child advocacy center can help with the... can help with those things, but when a family experiences something traumatic, you know, they can be out of work for a bit and not getting those paychecks. And we also, in addition to the forensic, forensic interviews, help them with Medicaid applications. We help them get crime victim assistance funding so they can continue to pay for their housing, their groceries and still be contributing members of the community. So there's that, that primary victim support, but then there's also that secondary support to support families in the aftermath, which is almost just as difficult as the, the crime itself. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Thanks for clarifying on that too. I, I have no further questions.
Great.
Nor do I. Thanks for coming in.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I hope you have a great rest of the day.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Take care.
Alrighty, um, next on the agenda, we have Lake County Stronger Futures Alliance. Do we have the representatives from, uh, Stronger Futures here?
Yes, I think we are all online. And we have a presentation that I think I emailed in, but I'm also happy to share it if that is easy.
Sorry, I'm back.
Awesome. So, uh, we can actually skip to the, the next slide, which will give you a little bit more information about who the Lake County Stronger Futures Fund is and what we are doing. I don't know if you click or scroll.
Oh, did that work?
Yeah, that is perfect. Thank you so much. So even though our name, Lake County Stronger Futures, might be new, you hopefully recognize all of our organizations and our faces on this call. But in light of the many challenges our community is facing this year, our seven organizations decided to come together and formalize our existing coordination efforts in order to be able to address the most critical needs in our community. So today you will hear from Advocates of Lake County, C4, Department of Human Services is not here, but they are a part of our effort, Full Circle of Lake County, Lake County Build a Generation, the Lake County Community Fund and St. George's. And with that, I'm going to pass it off to.
I am here, Emily. It's Laura.
Laura, I'm so glad you could join us. Hope you're feeling okay.
Okay.
Hey, everybody. Tim Best with the Advocates. I'm gonna talk about the, the growing need in our community. So even before the current stress and strain, the gap between incomes and the cost of living was getting worse and worse in Lake County. Nineteen percent of residents were displaced in the last five years due to the rising cost of living. Those that aren't, have not been displaced are struggling. Simply put, the, the ability to afford to live here on a working person's income is just very, very, very difficult. So we have combined forces, given that resources are scarce during a time where the need is increasing, to sort of collectivize our ask and so that we can strategically target where where the money need, most needs to go, which is directly to community members. And you can move on to the next slide, please. So as you all know, pretty much all public assistance is, has been hampered or reduced. Cost of living locally continues to go up. Food access is obviously front and center right now as a result of the shutdown. And St. George's is, has been heroically picking up the slack. Reports from my staff were that there were more people at St. George's than ever this morning at the Wednesday distribution. Rental assistance, both Full Circle and we at the Advocates have seen drastic decrease in funds available for emergency assistance, rent and mortgage, property tax assistance. Here at the Advocates, our referral system, which has seen a hundred and seventy referrals in the last year and a half, twenty-five of those have been within the last month. So our asks for rental assistance are just intensifying. And then utility assistance, C4 has seen a decrease in two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the last year, while a thirty percent increase in requests for assistance and a two hundred percent increase in disconnects. So the need is great and funds are scarce. So that's why we have combined to, to, to ask collectively rather than individually as organizations. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Udalia.
Thank you, Tim. Hi, my name is Udalia Contreras. I am the CEO of Full Circle of Lake County. So yeah, a lot of what Tim said, that is probably our highest request that we get here at Full Circle. And it is our busiest time when we are able to offer rent assistance. Recently, we've had property tax assistance and mortgage assistance. And that was through the last two years from the county and the city. And we still have waitlist on those. So the Unmet Needs Committee, that all started back during COVID. There was so much money coming into our community for, for these things. And it seemed like, we thought, okay, COVID's over, these needs are no longer there. They have, they're still there. It's the highest need. We have data that shows that. And we continue to try and offer and look for other funding resources to be able to continue to offer those resources. We have, we have continuous funding from Rocky Mountain Health Foundation. It's a pretty small pot. We go through that every year pretty quickly. We always try to use the funding that we have that's, needs to be used by the certain fiscal year. Try to use that up. We, when people come in to apply for any kind of benefits, we try to connect them to any other resources that we have. We have family goal planning with them. We, any, any of our other programs, like our parenting classes, we also try to provide stipends for, for families as well whenever possible. And we have the structure for it. I mean, like I said, this started back in, in COVID. We redid it. We redid the Unmet Needs Committee model again when we received additional funding. So our coordinators, we're all familiar with what that process looks like. It has worked well. If I remember correctly, I think we only have had to turn down a couple of people for very clear reasons. Like I think two of them were second homeowners trying to apply for property tax assistance. So not a lot of red tape. There's be very low barrier. And we can do a quick turnaround. I mean, sometimes when you have somebody come in, they're saying, I have an eviction notice. And I thought I could have, could have figured it out by now and I haven't and my court date's tomorrow. We can like review that process very quickly. And I know that's not the case for all, some of the other programs that just have other requirements. So again, it, we've had, we've paid for with our, some of our other funding, anywhere from, I need to pay my rent this month to get back on my feet, to I, I need new tires to just get back and forth to work. I have a job now. I just need that little bit of assistance. And usually, I mean, some folks we do see repeatedly, especially now with the increase of rental and all of these, everything going up. But for the most part, a lot of people are able to get through a few months after that assistance is what we have seen.
I'm Melissa Early. I'm the pastor in residence at St. George. And we believe firmly that this kind of program or this program would benefit the whole community, not just the particular individuals and families who would receive emergency funding for various needs. When families are able to pay a phone bill, that because of other unexpected costs are unable to pay, they can, they can keep going to work. When they're able to stay in their housing because they were able to get emergency rental assistance or assistance with a mortgage payment or a tax payment, then they're staying in constant housing, which is better for them as well as the whole community. There, and for those of us who work with folks in direct service, working together helps reduce the stress and the logjam on our particular organizations. To have this kind of coordinated effort with money behind it will make a huge difference. I know for St. George, to have a, a place where we are coordinating the, the additional assistance we sometimes are asked to give, a place to send folks where we know there are funds there for them will be enormously helpful and other C4, Full Circle Advocates, the county will all benefit from having this kind of support. And when, when renters are getting emergency rental assistance, then their landlords are also getting paid. And that money stays then in the community. When folks are able to pay their utilities, that's better for the whole system. If someone needs propane to heat their RV, then they're, they buy it at Ace or at Big R so that, that continues to keep the, the funds circulating in our community, which is good for our whole, our whole, everyone in Lake County. You can go to the next slide. There we go. So there's some examples of how we fit with county priorities, particularly housing and economic development. As I said, local spending is good for the whole economy, keeping people employed. And then jobs is good for the whole economy so that, that if they need tires to get to a job, they can keep working, which is good for our local businesses. And as we know, housing is just such a crisis for us right now in Lake County that to be able to increase housing security will help folks in their whole, in their whole lives. It will help kids who are going to school and kids and families continue to participate in our community.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Kristen King. I'm also with Advocates of Lake County. So just to recap what we've talked about, as we mentioned, we've seen about a five hundred thousand dollar funding decrease across all of our organizations from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. And at the same time, we're getting more and more requests for support every single day. So at the end of the day, we just have to close this gap. Because without some kind of intervention, more and more families are at risk of eviction, of homelessness, of going hungry, of not being able to keep the heat on. And our local service providers, our healthcare systems, government agencies are facing ever growing demand with very limited options to meet those needs. So what we're asking for is your support for this collaborative, aligned cross-agency approach that's going to allow us to make the most strategic, effective use of the funds that we do have to fill true gaps without duplicating efforts. Because frankly, we can't afford to do that. We have to make every penny count and we have to make sure the right money is going to the right places to solve problems quickly. So when we work together as an alliance of organizations, it allows us to stretch limited dollars further. We can make more nuanced and equitable decisions and we can respond to this crisis quickly and effectively without a ton of administrative nonsense and also without adding more burden to the systems in our community that are already overstretched. So with your financial support, we can create a stronger future for the long term right here and we can start it right now. So thank you so much for your time and consideration of our application and we'd love to answer any questions that you might have.
I think it's really awesome that you guys coordinated and got everyone sort of under, you know, one banner. I mean, just the idea that, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot of moving pieces there. Getting everybody together is, is a super, it's, it's an awesome move. So I really want to say, you know, thanks for you, to you guys for getting that collaborative sort of front, that unified front. That's, that's really awesome.
Thanks, Andy. Yeah, thank you so much for, for the opportunity to present today. Something else that I, I would love to highlight as well. We at Full Circle, so we would be administering this and doing that piece and we wouldn't be taking any of it for any of our overhead costs. It would be going completely back to, to the community. We're fortunate that we know how that structure works and we're able to, with other funding sources, continue to, to support in that way.
Hey guys, so is there a specific funding request or if that came in an email, I apologize, I can look that up. But is there a number or dollar amount tied to this request?
Yeah, we submitted an application to the county, the form that, that the county requested and we are requesting a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I, I just want to say thank you all so much for being real community leaders in this way. I think it's a really impressive new model. That's not like unfamiliar, but I, I just appreciate y'all's creativity and humility. And I like this idea of kind of like as costs increase, how do we push that money back into the people's pockets who need it the most? It's almost like doing a progressive tax, but like backwards. So anyway, I just really appreciate the creativity, given the context of how we collect taxes and how we fund things. And I just want to say thanks you all for being really excellent examples of leadership in this community.
Thanks, Alfa.
Great, thank you. I have no further questions if none of the other commissioners do.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you, thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We really appreciate all of you guys coming in today and all the hard work that you're doing to help out this community.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
We. I'm sorry. We have one. Hey, Laura.
All right, I'll leave y'all alone to deliberate, but let me know if y'all have any questions.
We will. Yeah, there's going to be a lot of, you know, hard thought that we'll, we'll be putting into all, you know, not only this, but all the, all the partners we've seen presented today. And we'll have a lot of questions.
Yep. All right.
Thank you, Laura. You too. Right, last, we'll hear from the ski joring official head honcho.
Yeah, Duffy, we can hear you.
Whoa, all right, start video so you can see me. Hey. You guys see me okay?
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody. I'm just looking around screen to see who's all on here. Again, my name is Duffy Council. I'm the event organizer for Leadville Ski Joring. Thanks for time. Thanks first and foremost for the unconditional support the county has been giving us. This will be, March will be my 10th year organizing the event. Was a competitor for fifteen years before that. I shot off an email. I don't know if any of you have seen it that had kind of the, the piece that Kingdom Media Company put together for us, highlighting some of the stats and stats from quite frankly, the biggest ski joring event I've ever seen in this town.
Pulling it up right now. Can you just a sec?
And no need to go through it just for your own pleasure. Click on the link that says elevation ski joring. It's kind of a guy in a red, white and blue cutoff bib overall start. That's the 10 minute video. If you scroll to like that second or third page. Sarah, are you driving?
No, I am. Let me just sec.
Yeah, let's scroll to next page. Maybe one more. There, you click on that picture, that's the 10 minute video. Though you don't need, don't, you don't have to do it now.
Okay.
Uh, and then you'll see like the ads later, the last few pages. If you click on each one of those, it should bring up the ad that they ran in advance. Those, uh, those I'd like to think a big help, having a company like Kingdom Media Company come on board. Those uh those I'd like to think a big help, having a company like Kingdom Media Company come on board. Every year it's different, whether it's CBS Morning News, we make a spot on. This next year, uh Norwegian TV channel wants to come and have somebody compete and highlight it for, it's like the Norwegian Public Television Channel. I I don't know much about it. But it's, guys, it's growing. Um, and and I appreciate being able to have this platform, you know, I I will say that there are a lot of organizations, I'm sure, that ask the county for financial support. And what I think makes us different doesn't make us better. In fact, I would say that there's a good chance that the majority of the organizations you guys support currently are more important in this community than Leadville Ski Joring is. But the the difference, I believe, is that is that those programs and and nonprofits that are great do their their benefit in the community, but they cost money. Whereas Leadville Ski Joring, it seems, is an entity that can bring money into this community. And so I'm hopeful to earn the ears on the county side. We've been getting some financial support from the city for several years, ever since we started doing the broadcast that year out on McWethy. Uh, and again, there's no way we could do the event without all of the in-kind resources provided, but things like I'm gonna have to order a bunch more porta potties this year. Uh, insurance goes up every year, paying for announcers, paying for somebody like the Kingdom Media Company to come in and advertise before the event, during the event, produce us something totally awesome afterwards. That that production won them telly awards. I've got one, Mayor Dana Green's got it right now. Uh, it it came and said, you know, uh, was gonna say Duffy Council, Event Organizer, Leadville Ski Joring, like no, it needs to say Leadville Championship Ski Joring. Leadville, Colorado, ten thousand two hundred feet since nineteen forty nine. It's ours. It's not mine. Doesn't belong to anybody, it belongs to all of us. So if commissioners, if you guys need a turn with the telly when I get it back from Mayor Dana Green, let me know and it can sit on your desk or at home. You guys deserve some time with that too. Um, and I'm I'm hopeful to instill a mentality with the county of hey, this event is generating significant revenue, not only for the businesses that we seek to help, but I know there's a big amount of sales tax dollars that come in. And I'm confident that between the finance staff of both the city and the county, someone is gonna be able to someday to report back to me, hey, here's what that event brings us. Round numbers, look back last year, what's an average weekend look like in March? What's the ski jar weekend look like? Or deduce simple numbers. And and the reason I'm so insistent on that is ski jars are strivers. You know, we we strive to do our best every time we go out and compete. You know, the event organizing is a bit of a competition me between me and and all these other awesome event organizers. And and we need that. We need that feedback to know what kind of a difference are we making? We know it from the businesses and I could go to Tree Line just as an example and say, hey, what'd you do the weekend before? What'd you do that weekend? What'd you do the weekend next? And come up with a percentage and make probably an inaccurate deduction that the county and the city's sales tax dollar mirrors that. So I I'm asking for, I'm not not trying to like insist or be a bully at all, but I'm hopeful that there's some motivation there, like look at the amount of work these guys put in. The least that we can do is give them some type of a metric of how they're doing. So that if next year's not as big, we can say, all right, what kind of things can we do different and change? So please, somebody help us out and figure out what does that event bring into our community from a sales tax dollar standpoint? I'd like some help from the county commissioners or anybody on staff. The Lions Club is struggling once again. Uh, nothing scary, but they're they're getting older faster than they're getting younger. And John Cheryl Wells stepped down from the the Lions organization this year to pursue more full-time retirement and living elsewhere and and Connie Yant has said she'll pick up where they left off, but she's like, Duff, I can't do all this. And so I'm I'm curious, you know, is it the Cloud City Mountain Sports? Is it the EDC? Is it Build a Generation? I would love to see, maybe it's even the Lake County High School Sports. Uh, but some organization that could perhaps partner with the Lions, hey, Lions get the ankles and this organization get the wrists and help them a joint effort between two entities where I'd like to think perhaps that entity could then solicit some of the proceeds from that weekend's brat tent sales from the Lions and they'd be more than happy to share. So I'm sorry to give you a little homework, but know a couple of you personally. Uh, if you can reach out to me with, hey, I got some ideas on who might be a a good organization that could partner with the Lions Club to help with that brat tent. I'd I'd hate to see that go away. Uh, kind of in that vein as well. It was brought up at city council and some other folks mentioned like Duff, you know, spectators can't get can't get food quick enough. Uh, you know, there's some services that maybe we can improve. So I've got, I solicited all the food trucks in town, even out to Twin Lakes. A lot of them don't move, uh, for very good reason. Some of them said like, absolutely not. I I do not want anything to do with ski touring weekend. Uh, but the brave include uh the Taco Bus, El Mexicano and and Hot Heads Chicken and the Lowbrow Dudes. Uh, and so we'll figure out, I'm hopeful in a similar fashion to how it was done Boom Days. Uh, and see if we can get a couple of food trucks on the avenue to help take some of the load off of the restaurants, but also what's most important, keep that money here. I I get a lot of requests from a lot of vendors uh wanting to set up shop, clothing, food, coffee, booze, you name it. And the answer's always no, we don't allow vendors on the avenue for ski joring as that is counterproductive to the whole reason why we do the event. Uh, Parks and Recreation, I wanted to just kind of throw out there, I heard from somebody in conversations, yeah, Parks and uh Pro's Parks Recreation and Open Space Now wants to charge you guys for use of the fairgrounds. We're absolutely not uh even willing to discuss that. That's a, that's use of a community asset that wouldn't otherwise be used during a weekend that benefits this community. Uh, offline, if somebody has some logic, I'm not understanding as to why we would need to pay to use that facility, uh, let me know, or maybe somebody can follow up with pros. Uh, I'm talking with the Sharma bit on a cow, uh, sell on wheels. You know, I think it's a good idea to try to boost the cellular bandwidth. Uh, I wasn't even aware that we had gone away from the wifi that we had downtown years ago, but I I do note that we're encouraging a lot of folks to check out our social media for run order sheets, info about the event, et cetera. It also really stymies everybody's ability to post themselves about the event, which gets us more attention and traction. So that's something in the work, call that one a cow. Again, more porta potties. Uh, parking plan also came up. I'll work through the city with this, but I'm certainly all all ears. My parking plan is get here early and get to park close to Harrison Avenue. You know, but perhaps on our website, on the spectator tab, we could do some type of an aerial shot of Leadville that identifies where the school or some other parking areas are. Just in the in the real world, that one falls on me like the bleachers, that it's a perceived good idea. But in the end, a set of bleachers is saving thirty butts, even if we got three of them out there, that's ninety butts, that's a hundred people were potentially helping out out of ten to fifteen thousand. I'm just not certain that Michael Irwin and his crew are prepared to add that additional bandwidth to their already busy schedule, especially if we get snow that weekend. Digging them out from the fairgrounds, standing them up, hand loading them onto a flatbed one at a time and bringing them down. You know, I've identified, I think, East and West Seventh Streets as well as East Fifth would be about the only locations we could go. Heard lots of folks talking about wanting to put them on the courthouse lawn. I I'm not going to do that. Lawn is tough enough to grow here in Leadville and irrigation's in that soil, I'm sure. So that's, again, one of those perceived good ideas, but just not certain that's gonna come to fruition. Um, I I I think again, most importantly, guys, is is the financing side of things. Uh, I appreciate your open mindedness, or I would, I would like to think in a perfect world that when that sales tax revenue comes in, whether it's in April or May and it hits, if entities like the city and the county could say, wow, look at this, total awesome uptick, let's not budget for this, that's dangerous. Uh, there's no guarantee that we don't have four degrees and nuclear winter conditions for this year's event. As we know, the universe always balances. And we're not gonna have forty-four degree days, both days every weekend. But once that that windfall rolls in, I would love to see a mentality of, hey, let's invest in the future of this event and take a small piece of this, you know, guys, I'm talking like a five grand ballpark. A piece of this windfall sales tax revenue and put it back towards the very event that is continuing to generate these numbers for us. I think that's all the hot air that I got. Are there any questions?
Uh, I I don't have a ton of questions. Um, I I think it's pretty undeniable, the economic impact that this ski drawing event has on this town, all the positive uh aspects of that. Um, that's a thousand percent. Uh, I I will acknowledge that a thousand percent. Um, one thing I do, I do notice, you know, as far as a a broader kind of question is, I I don't know if I've ever seen a ton of like merch for the this ski joring event that might be something that could help sort of boost and further. I, you know, I'm not, I'm not ruling anything out from the county's end. Uh, we we gotta, you know, have hard conversations about what we can do with what what we have, but um, just as far as helping ski joring in general and hoping it, you know, continues to elevate and be this amazing thing that you guys have picked up the torch on and brought to an awesome level. Um, what kind of like stuff are you guys selling to generate more revenue to help help out the event?
Yeah, good, great question. Uh, it was something I started and it was proceeded very cautiously. Our goal is to sell out intentionally every year so that if you miss out, it just creates demand you want it that bad. Uh, this last year, we changed the shirt design to kind of a stars and stripes on either sleeve, Leadville Ski Joring. It's important, we always advertise Leadville, Colorado and ten thousand two hundred feet and since nineteen forty nine. But we sell long sleeve shirts, the other model you might have seen, they got rings on the arm. Linda Graves with Lind Craft has been our gal for years. So shirts, hoodies, beanies, ball caps, magnetic koozies are a big hit. Uh, buffs, you know, kind of where in the winter fly fishing for sun protection, uh, some cheapy little bracelets. Uh, stickers, you know, really strive to keep it simple so that it's the right cost per unit. So that we can sell it to the spectator for the right cost for them. They don't want to pay forty bucks for a shirt. I'm sure some of them would, but you know, shirts we go like twenty-five bucks, the hats are twenty, sweatshirts are forty. Koozies are like five to seven reusable grocery bags. It it's almost a dual initiative of, yeah, let's see if we can make ourselves a little bit of money, maybe couple thousand bucks at best is what we've ever seen. But more, it's kind of that free advertising and scratches the itch of getting the competitors something that they'd been asking for. You know, I've I've had other companies wanna reach out and hey, maybe in a perfect world, I partner with somebody like a sold out in BV and say, look, you make whatever you want and sell the heck out of it all weekend, a limitless supply of it and then give us a cut or give us a sponsorship percentage. I'm I'm just not certain that that uh is as win-win. I feel like we'd be making less money and granted, yeah, more stuff gets sold, but that's that's not necessarily our our MO. So great idea, Andy, we're we're doing it. Uh, the challenge I find with it, you know, we don't, we don't have a warehouse or we we don't have like a home base. So like there's a a big pile of boxes over in the corner of my living room that sit here for the other eleven months of the year when there's leftover stuff, uh, is why we maybe try to, you know, ru- round numbers, we're spending a little over ten grand and we're pulling in maybe three, which is a good, a good ratio, I'll say. But that's kind of the economics, you know, in in a real nutshell. I don't typically disclose that type of stuff, but that's high level economics, spend ten to make three and ideally sell out every year.
Roger that. Hey, thanks. I just wanted to, you know, uh, understand more of what what you guys were were doing with the with the merchandising and stuff, so thanks.
Yeah.
Duffy, what is your funding model? Like how and also did the tourism panel contribute any money to ski during this year? I know that uh the city did award y'all like three thousand bucks.
We got twenty-five hundred and the first pull from the city draw, we'll be getting another thirty-five hundred from them in the second draw to get us on pace. That six grand we've been doing again since the COVID year. It started, it's like a, hey, reimburse us for the broadcast we spent money on that year and we'll, we do it again and then it's kind of just continued forward. Uh, tourism panel, you know, talking last year's event, we haven't secured a dollar of funding for this year's yet. I've tried in the past to go to merchants around town after a fattening summer, but they always say like, get out of here. Like, don't come see me till January, Duff. Uh, tourism panel kicked us a thousand bucks last year and Adam's been just an awesome, awesome cog in the machine and has really, really blossomed into a a big help with Talis and me and promotion of the event. Uh, so tourism panel's doing great. He's a huge advocate. I'd love to see from the county side a little bit more of that type of, hey, can we help financially? If it's available, you know, those of you who know me know that I'm the kind of guy that this year, the message is, do I need money from the county in order to be able to do it? No. But am I going to and do I I desperately want to instill a mentality of pride with the county? So that some of the money that we make, right, a year for year too, there's no expectation, it happens every year. But that type of stuff enables me not only to continue to grow the production of the event responsibly. And I'm not a big fan of like big production. If it doesn't move the needle of the quality of the event, then I'm I'm not for it. You know, this isn't Hollywood, this is Leadville, Colorado. Uh, but it also enables me to pay out the competitors who win larger payout amounts. I would encourage you guys check out www.proskijor.com. And when I see y'all in passing or whatever and you go like, holy cow, Duff. Ski Jor Utah, you know, they're offering out over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in prize money across five, six events. Some of them like thirty, fifty grand each. And I just want to make sure that from the event standpoint and competition standpoint and and where this has all evolved to from Leadville, right? This is the cornerstone. We retain uh intentional archaic nature of our event to celebrate the past as well as acknowledge some of these other big fancy events have been a flash in the pan and they're gone already. Uh, just trying to stay current so that we don't lose on having the better the competitors, the better the crowd, the more money we make, that type of mentality. Leadville's not known for its big payouts and it never will be, but we don't want to be known for bad ones. Does that answer your question, Elsa?
A a little bit. I mean, just to be clear, the tourism panel is the county. Adam Ducharme is the county. So so like to feel spirit and and collaboration with the county, it sounds like you are feeling that. So just want to make sure to understand that that's
Sure, I'll say then, I just want to feel more.
Yeah.
I want more feels. Fun funding plan, sorry, it's a real simple one right there. Like I walk in your business and put a big smile on and say, hey, it's TV's Duffy Council and we got ski joring come up. You know, a lot of the folks are the same. I really try to hit everybody so nobody feels left out. You know, favorite story of Sandy Marcela back at Matchless Hair where Tattoo Tony is these days. And she came up to me in the grocery store and said, Duffy, I don't think that the ski joring event really moves my needle a whole ton at Matchless Hair, but could I give you twenty-five dollars towards the event? I want to be a part of it too. Like, absolutely. You know, that's the kind of, there's no amount too small, obviously not too big. And and in a perfect world, I spent two hours on the phone this morning talking with a gal who represents brands like Red Bull, Stetson, Tractor Supply, you know, a whole list. Someday, I would love to see Leadville Championship Ski Joring brought to you by Carhartt, right, as the title sponsor. They got banners on all the jumps, a bunch on track. Hey, the community, if you want to, you can still throw us a little bit, put your banner up to make it feel hometown fun. But that's eventually where I'd like, and they all know, they all know this is the granddaddy of them all and attracts some of the biggest crowds in the entire country because of our longevity towards it. You know, and and if that were to happen, then that's the year where I'm like, hey, city, county, take a pause, put it towards something else good in our community, we're good to go.
Um, Duffy, so the five thousand dollars that you're you're asking for, it is that for a specific thing or is that for general operating of the entire event?
Yeah, I think it's just a general operating the entire event. It's gonna enable me to pay a more competitive winners. Uh, you know, first, second, third. I I know for certain health insurance, if anybody's going through that right now, you know, you're seeing similar to sometimes property tax, thirty to fifty percent increases. Uh, I I had two porta potties for years. Last year was the first time like, hey, you know what, we'll get four more, put them in the courthouse parking lot there on the north side off Sixth Street. Great. Not even close. Like I I probably gotta go a dozen this year and put them on both sides of the sidewalks. It's just a couple of examples of costs and production costs seemingly continue to keep going up. As well as things like we had to buy a trailer when the building that sat at one, two, three, East Fifth now is a gravel parking lot for lifetime. Uh, you know, totally fine, and no hard feelings there. Uh, we had to buy a trailer to house all our stuff. It cost us seven thousand bucks. Uh, we had to buy a trailer to house all our stuff, it cost us 7,000 bucks. At some point, I'm gonna have to replace all of the event fencing up and down Harrison Avenue. That's gonna come at a one-time significant cost or announcer stand or, you know, it reminds me, we'd love, here's an idea, maybe in year one, it's a good crawl, walk, run approach. Uh, Jason Dahl and I, every year, meet at Copper on Thursday afternoon. We get permission from the resort, I've been there 25 years, so that's, that's easy enough. And we put as many barricades as we can onto a, a Big Tex Flatbed Trailer and strap them all down, drive them up, line the avenue to make the fence stand up better and look smarter, so it's not just the street signs and stoplights and signposts we're using. Uh, you know, 40 or so barricades and then have to take them back down and drop them off again on Monday. I would love to say, hey, county, who knows, maybe even Boom Days or a Lifetime is in on something like this. I want you to buy 100 barricades. You know, even 50 barricades, add 100 bucks a piece, you know, call it round numbers, five grand. Let us know what contribution you'd like from ski joring towards it. I'd like to think we could maybe even go halvesies and then you keep them. They're yours, we just use them for two days every year. And if you wanna rent them out to other organizations, I, I would obviously be a, a fan of not charging Boom Days for them, but if it's Lifetime or it's other events, they're your barricades that you got at half the cost that we just get to use that weekend, those are the kinds of partnerships I wanna explore. To see, how, how do we find some of these win-wins?
I really like all that idea, especially, you know, the collaboration approach. It's how we really gotta look at every, you know, the lens, we have to look at everything moving towards the future with tighter and tighter resources and us always wanting to do bigger and better things. So I appreciate that, uh, that line of thinking there Duffy.
Yeah, that, that's, it's, it's ours, it's not, I, I really appreciate the kudos that I get and boy, is my back sore for a few weeks after the event from people patting it and saying, thank you, Duff, we just had our best weekend ever, we're gonna make it till Ju- till June, all of that, like that is what we do it for. Kinda in the, in the vein of, you know, what are we making from a sales tax revenue? So we can feel that pride and fill our batteries with that and know that, guys, this is by far, I'm very active in this community. Uh, this is by far the best way I have found ever to give back to my home community of Leadville and Lake County is efforts towards this with the sensational results it has yielded. From a awareness of our town, you know, primary and secondary spend, you know, similar to the Lifetime events. Uh, and I'd like to see it keep going, so that, that barricade thing, that's an offer on the table. I'm happy to bird dog it as well with Irwin. You want me to reach out to Colorado Barricades and say, yo, what would 50 barricades cost? It may be cheaper if we go down and get them. I'm fine to accompany on those types of things or again, like you said, Andy, a, a collaboration where if us, Boom Days, Lifetime, County went in on a $5,000 invoice to have 50 barricades for our events and, and county owns them, store them in the yard, I already asked Irwin, he says we could find somewhere to put them. Then that to me is, is an asset that we have, but as long as we take care of, is not only there for us, but for others as well.
Excellent, uh, I have no further questions on, on, uh, ski joring, man, I appreciate you coming in and the enthusiasm that you bring to it, that is, is undeniable and, and super awesome.
Matt, what about you?
I've never met you before, it's nice to meet you bud.
Nice to meet you Duffy, yeah, thanks for the presentation, there's no doubt that I'd say that event rivals the Leadville 100 in exposure and I've never seen so many social influencers as I saw this year. It was crazy, so, and there's no doubt that it, it's driving sales tax in a big way. You know, especially at the city, but yeah, so we're all, I'm all for it. Super pragmatic presentation and, you know, you've thought a lot about it and you're super passionate, so I appreciate that and we'll, we'll see what we can do, you know, working together.
Yeah, we're working together.
I'm all for it, man.
Alright, cool.
If the prize money gets really big, I might just get into it.
Famous last words.
Any prize, any prize money for the amateurs or just the pros?
Yeah, no, we, we pay out in the open division, the sport 2D, I'm gonna do away with the snowmobile division this year. That, that got zany, right, like we're doing the kids event, it's getting dark. Uh, made it, you know, as cool as we could, hey kids, you're getting to do it under the lights. Had to pause to the Mineral Belt Mayhem with the Cloud City Wheeler friends of ours could ride right through the start. And then back to the kids, I went, oh, we're gonna have to cap the number of total competitors. Maybe someday we gotta bump everything up an hour and start at high 11 o'clock instead of high noon. You know, we're constantly looking at, at those kind of things to how can we get the biggest bang for the buck without, without losing control, quite frankly, and it's, it's close. I had Colorado Public Radio standing behind the Pueblo Bank and Trust uh, in the parking lot, the drive-through there, and she's doing an interview with me and, and while it's all going off midday Saturday and said, you know, this is unbelievable, did you anticipate this many people? And I said, absolutely not, this is, this is arguably more people that Leadville's seen since the 1800s, that might be true. And she says, well, do you think, do you think that Leadville will falter? And I said, what, what do you mean? Like, do you think there's a chance you're gonna lose control? And I said, if you think for one second that there's any chance that Leadville takes a knee during something like this in this town, well then you don't know the first thing about Leadville and mining towns, like there's no quit. We'll take whatever we get, we've got 36 inches of snow during the event in the past. 2019, before all the 100-year avalanche events occurred, that was the next week. And so between that and, and overwhelming abundant crowd, like watching those people climb over Capitol Hill, uh, it felt almost zombie apocalypse-like. Hearing that they're parking at Safeway and walking in, Paul said it took him, Paul Copper, it took him nine minutes to get from his shop to the stoplight at Safeway. You know, so that's again, back to that parking plan where I go, I've, maybe it's, maybe it's the, what do you guys call the cruiser, the transit, the Lake County Transit?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe that's an, another opportunity that I can work with you guys on to say, alright, simple. Uh, maybe it runs from the schools, parking lots on Sixth Street and drops them off a block off Avenue. Maybe it swings over to the elementary school and drops them off, you know, a block off Sixth Avenue, or we could figure out a simple, you know, again, I don't think that, that significantly saves the world. But those kind of things for me are ones, let's each year be trying, a little tweaking, a little something different so that we can then better say, yes, that has potential for impact or nope, that didn't move the needle at all, it was a good thought, but it was a perceived solution, not a real one.
Well, great job Duffy, nice to meet you and, uh, you know, great presentation, appreciate it.
Cool. Thanks for fitting me in, I'll sign off guys, enjoy the rest of your day, stay safe.
Hey, thanks Duffy, you have a good day, man.
Appreciate it Duffy, thank you. Thank you.
Alright, thanks everybody, see y'all soon.
See ya.
Alright. Uh, alright, so that concludes our, uh, afternoon work session, it is 2:45 PM. And, uh, that's it for us today, so thank you guys.
Thank you Chair.